I'm just missing. I think Terrence is there as an attendee.
Yeah.
Has under a different last name.
Okay.
I'm texting him now.
He says he can't change his name until he gets let in, he doesn't think.
Okay.
But I think there's two of them, so maybe it's what?
Yeah.
Well, I just told him to tell Jennifer to get off so that he, you'll know which one is him.
All right. Thank you.
It should fix itself. Okay. And now you can change his name.
Terrific. Yes, I think we're all set. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's really nice to see you all. It's Thursday, June 18th. Welcome to our last Board of Education meeting of the school year. I think we're in our 14th week of distance learning now. And in just a moment, I'm going to ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, as is our custom, and then we can look ahead to tonight's meeting agenda. If you would all please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific. Thank you so much. And I'd like to make a motion that will return to public session if I can ask Julia to please second the motion for me. Thank you, Julia.
I can second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific. Thank you. So with the board's permission, I would really like to start tonight by thanking our community for the incredible support and turnout, unconventional turnout, though it may be. In our most recent budget vote and election, we received nearly 5,000 ballots in the mail. And a huge thank you to Kim Monzen and our team of election inspectors for the project management dedication and fortitude to bring us over the finish line. This really was a most extraordinary budget vote. And we really want to thank our community for sticking with us through an attenuated budget development process, budget adoption process, for taking the time to understand our budget and our second proposition, and for showing such resounding support. A 77% budget approval rating is fantastic. And we believe that the budget really is going to prepare Katona Lewisboro to meet the needs of our students, even in these unprecedented circumstances. So thank you again to the administration for the proposed adjustments to the budget as circumstances were changing rapidly throughout the past couple of months. Thank you to Kim and our election inspectors, and thank you so very much to the community. We have a resolution later in tonight's meeting on the consent agenda, but with the board's permission, I wanted to suggest that we pull that resolution now and just officially take action on item 12.06. I'd like to move item 12.06. This is our opportunity to accept the annual budget vote and election results. And I'd like to ask somebody to second, if I can ask Rory to second that. Thank you. Thank you. And I would also like to take a moment to congratulate Bill Rifkin, who's here with us this evening on his reelection to the board. I'd like to congratulate Catherine Osterker on her election to the board, and I would like to congratulate, to thank rather Samantha Holzman for her willingness to run for the Board of Education, for her dedication to our students and her capacity as a PTO leader, and for taking the time to speak with us and express her interest in the board. So congratulations, Bill. Congratulations, Catherine. And with that, I don't know whether there's any further discussion or we can go ahead and vote. I'll pause for just a moment in case anybody wanted to say anything.
I'm not sure if it's the right time for me to say anything, but I'll do it anyway. I also wanted to thank the community. Serving on the board is one of the singular honors of my life, and I take it very seriously and take the support to heart, both those who did vote for me and those who didn't. I want to be open to all the entire community and represent to the best of my ability, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. If there's no further discussion, then let's please vote on the results of our budget vote and election. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific. Thank you so very much. Thank you. So with that, I will just pause here for other board announcements. If there are additional announcements from board members, yes, Terrence, please.
Hi, Marjorie. Thank you. So I just want to take a moment to also congratulate Bill and Catherine, and I also want to thank Samantha. And I think we're really lucky to have three great people, genuinely great people, dedicated community servants who want to be a part of this work. So grateful to them, all three of them, and happy to just have Bill another few years, and happy to welcome Catherine. It just says a lot about our community. And I want to thank the community as well, passing the budget. The budget is a real endorsement of the district's really fine work. And I think, I would say it's especially important to celebrate these kinds of positives, to have the support of our community, particularly during this remarkably difficult, challenging time. The virus has upended so many things, and recently the protests and turmoil resulting from the murder of George Floyd. Personally, I'll tell you, I was very proud to have my name associated with the statement that was made by the superintendent and the board on June 12th. I think it's important to say the names, George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery. And unfortunately, there's another name to add to this list, Rashad Brooks. But these names have to be spoken loud, and it's important to say the words, "Black lives matter," out loud. Education plays a huge role in the battle against racial and social injustice. And I want to use an example from my own child's experience. Just a few weeks ago, my daughter is in sixth grade. She's on Team Perspective. And after the murder of George Floyd, her ELA teacher, Mark Grossman, you know, he diverted his lesson for the day, and he really concentrated that day's work on the events that were going on, and he did it in a really empathetic, broad, but emotional and genuine way. And it made an impact on my daughter. It makes an impact on me as a parent. And so I thank him, and I thank all of our teachers who are sensitive and just really in touch with how important those things are. So I just want to say thank you to Andrew and the administration, and all of our teachers who work so hard every single day to create an environment of culture and a culture of acceptance and inclusivity. So thank you.
Thank you, Terrence, for those very meaningful words, and thank you also for calling attention to our teachers and for thanking them for engaging students in conversation. You remind me that it also would be appropriate tonight to congratulate and to thank our humanities research and science research students who have, you know, had an unconventional opportunity, but an opportunity nevertheless to share their work with their families, their loved ones, with the board and with the community. And I mention that here because many of our students involved in research, whether it's social science humanities research or science research, they are already in remarkably mature ways addressing some of the inequities and societal problems plaguing us, not just today, but historically, as well as some of the, I'll say, global environmental challenges of our time. And the faculty who support that research and the students who are involved in two or three years of sustained research really are to be thanked and congratulated for the contributions that they are making already as high school students. And in that vein, I just also want to acknowledge and thank some of the great work that's happening and that's being made more publicly available now here sort of at the end. You know, I feel as if there's some more celebrating of the work that's been happening during the distance learning chapter of the year, where our principals, administrators generally are doing a great job helping families to really see the work that's gone on behind the scenes with very moving testaments to the artwork, for example, that students are engaged in. In the middle school, there's just been an art show for grades six, seven, and eight where even in some of the artwork where students are being asked to reflect on character strengths in the sixth grade, for example, and you look out at the words that our students are choosing to engage with artistically, words like respect, compassion, empathy, acceptance. Our staff is doing a really nice job engaging our students in this time, and their work really should be celebrated. So I thank you for the entree to speak to that. Are there any other board announcements? Yes, please, Liz.
I just, I wanted to congratulate Bill and Catherine and say thank you to Samantha as well. I served on the Parent Council as the liaison, and it was wonderful to be able to get to know two of the candidates, one who I knew in the past. And they are, you know, I think we're very lucky to have such active community members. I also wanted to say thank you to Scott, who will be leaving us, and to Aiden, who unfortunately doesn't seem to be here this evening for his service to the board this year. And I wanted to take a minute also to acknowledge the students that sent the letter to the administration this week. It was very thoughtful, thought-provoking, eloquent, and well-done, and I think that, um, you know, our administration has done a wonderful job. Our teachers have done a wonderful job, but I think it's also, it was very, it was very, I was very proud to see our students being so thoughtful and interested in this topic and concerned about how we talk about these issues and what we teach in our schools. So that was really, I think, a great testament to all of the good work that's being done here.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. Any other announcements from board members? If not, then Andrew, we would love to hear from you tonight, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of what I say will be repetitive tonight, but I certainly also want to start by thanking the community for your support. We're tremendously grateful. We always talk about this work as a partnership with the community. And really, we were in some ways overwhelmed by the show of support yesterday from the community and the result that we received. So we really are appreciative and grateful for that. And again, congratulations to the board trustees and thank you to all who chose to run. It's really important work, and we appreciate it. And then I also want to share a few words about the letter that Liz just referenced and the words that Terrence spoke. And for those maybe in the audience who don't know about the letter that we received, we got a letter beginning of this week from a large number of current and former students on the topic of racial justice and on the experiences that those students either have had or have not had in our schools and about the education that they received or did not receive in our classrooms when it comes to gaining a deeper understanding about the history the lives of and the injustices directed at black people in our country. And I agree with what's already been said, that the letter was thoughtful, it was eloquent, it was reasonable, and it called on us to do better. And we know that we must do better. So thank you again to all of those students and graduates who wrote the letter. I've already told them that we've shared that letter with all of our faculty and staff across the district because we think it's important for everyone who works in our schools to read those words. And I also want to thank those students in our community. I wanted to let the students and community know that the work of becoming an increasingly inclusive and more thoughtfully and broadly educated organization, one that understands and celebrates diversity in all its forms, one that speaks out against racism and injustice, that this, this work is not entirely new to us. It's even though we know we've got a lot to learn and a long way to go. But for several years, we have undertaken initiatives that are intended to further this work, from our revamping of classroom libraries and school libraries to include more diverse literature, to our work with the organization facing history and ourselves, to our learning cafes on diversity and on the mascot earlier this year, and to our efforts to educate ourselves through shared readings and conversations with our staff and among the staff. Those are just some of the efforts. And again, I acknowledge that they are just a beginning, but importantly, they are a beginning and they're a base from which we're committed to growing. And the work, this work surely is personal and complex, just as it must be systemic and organizational. And I want to use myself to illustrate this point. Typically, I avoid talking about myself at all costs, but now is a moment for personal reflection. Tomorrow, as I'm sure everyone knows, is Juneteenth, a day that marks the reading in Texas on June 19th, 1865, the orders that would finally free all slaves in Texas, the last state in the country to take that step. And that sentence that I just read comes from the internet, though I did check a few different sites for the sake of its validity. But the point is, I didn't learn about Juneteenth in school or in college or in graduate school, even though that day has been celebrated in parts of our country going all the way back to 1866. I didn't know of it until much later in my life. And yet this week, my email box, my inbox is full of emails telling me all about Juneteenth and providing readings and resources. And I've been asked if I would be sending such an email out to our district. And I was in fact very close to doing so, and it, I will share, it's a quandary for me as to what is the right thing to do, and it's something I've been thinking about a lot. But rather than move right ahead and send such an email, I spoke first with a number of our colleagues in the district, colleagues who've been more immersed in anti-racist education than I have been. And following that conversation, it feels more important at this moment to acknowledge how much I don't know and how much more I have to learn on this topic and on many related topics when it comes to the experience of black people in our country. And the fact that I know relatively little on this topic when in so many other areas I'm relatively well-educated speaks volumes about the systems and the structures in our country, all of those prior organizations that I've come through and been part of, and it says a lot about me, of course, and the work that I still have to do to better educate myself more broadly and more deeply. So while it would be relatively easy to send an email about Juneteenth and to cut and paste information and resources that have only recently come across my desk and then recommend them to others, I think one of the lessons for me in the last few weeks is that the ongoing work that we have before us and that we will undertake before us won't be easy, shouldn't be easy, and that we can't wait for or expect that someone else will come along to make it easy for us. I have to, with humility, I have to start from where I am today and address my own learning. And I think that's something that we all have to do, and everyone in our organization has been enormously committed in these last couple of weeks to doing that. I've been so touched by the conversations that staff have been engaged in on an almost daily basis these last couple of weeks. And there's been a lot of thought already about where do we go from here, and it's not easy. It won't be easy to figure out what's next. But I think it is important that we, again, as I said, approach it with humility, and we work through it together, and we work through it thoughtfully. While we're doing all of that, we're also planning for what we hope is some form of reopening in the fall, and we're working to get better at distance learning in case that needs to continue. And we're working to ensure the emotional and academic well-being of all of our students. So our plates continue to be very full, but all of this work is of course important. And we pledge to move it forward thoughtfully, with resolve, and not to rush to apply patches that might cover deficiencies without actually repairing or strengthening them. So we, again, I so appreciate those in the community that have reached out already. I've had a number of conversations with parents as well as with graduates, as well as current students, and that work will continue. It has to continue as we move forward. So that's what I wanted to say on that topic for tonight. Certainly, there'll be more to say on future days, but I did also want to mention a couple of other topics. Earlier, also earlier this week, our community learned that our students will be engaged in a vote on the new mascot next Monday. And we've had some questions about that. Again, understandably, nothing is simple or straightforward at the moment. And I can understand some people wondering why would we be doing that now, given all those other things I just spoke about. And, and we gave that an enormous amount of thought, and it's one of the reasons that it hasn't moved forward, in fact, earlier than today, because we were debating, given all the other things going on in the world, the appropriateness and the timing of that vote. In the end, we decided that we had made a commitment earlier this year to make the change in the mascot. And at this point, we know that we can move ahead without taking away from all the other work that needs to be done. And that's the point that I wanted to emphasize most to the community tonight, that the vote on Monday in no way detracts from all the other work that's necessary and important at the moment, and it also doesn't detract any financial resources from all of the other important work that has to go on as we prepare, post-finish this year, prepare importantly for the summer and for the reopening, we hope, in the fall. So we were confident that we could do all of those things at the same time and still finish out this commitment, and importantly, engage the students who were here with us this year through the debates and give them the opportunity to be involved in this decision for a new mascot on Monday. Switching topics again, extended school year or the summer school program for our students with disabilities is something that we've been thinking about a lot the last two weeks since the governor announced that schools across New York State have the opportunity to offer an extended school year program in person. This week, we surveyed the families whose children are eligible for that program to find out whether they would in fact send their children to an in-person program. We, at this point, we're still continuing to investigate as best we can. Again, it seems to be the theme at the moment. Nothing is easy. Everything is very complicated. We obviously want to do the best that we can for all our students reaching the determination of what's best while also what's safe and healthy is complicated. And we hope to have a decision, I would say, in the early part of next week on the extended school year program. And then finally, I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the survey that we ran last week and until the beginning of this week regarding distance learning. We had really a tremendous response to that survey. So we have lots of data to be looking through, which we will be doing in the coming weeks and months as we look towards the fall. So thank you so much to everybody for taking time with that. And we did say that we would also be surveying students, and we will still be doing that. We know there's not a lot of days of school left. The survey to students will be a little bit shorter than the one that went out to families, but it'll still be very important to us. We think we'll get that out to students at the beginning of next week. We'll ask them to turn it around fairly quickly because it won't take them long to do it, but it will give us great information. So in advance, we thank our students for taking some time with that. And I think those are all of my updates for tonight. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. We really appreciate your thoughtfulness and the invitation to reflect for each of ourselves on where we are and how much we have to learn. And really, we thank you just for raising awareness and being honest about your own journey with regard to learning about Juneteenth and trust that you've already continued to raise awareness even just by sharing that journey with us tonight publicly. So we really appreciate that. And thank you for the thoughtful updates on all of these topics and for all that's going on to determine what our options are and how to keep students safe in light of ever-changing opportunities and executive orders. So thank you for all of that work. If there aren't any questions or comments for Andrew, then I think we're ready to look ahead to recognition of board trustees. And while we're preparing to do that, I will just mention, since I know we have members of the community who have joined us tonight, that shortly after recognition of trustees, we will open up our meeting to public forum. And as you might know, there's a Q and A option at the bottom of your Zoom window. And if you could please identify yourself, we're not able to acknowledge anonymous comments, but if you could please introduce yourself and share a comment or remark, we will certainly read aloud anything that we receive tonight. And then a little bit later in tonight's meeting during board dialogue, we have an opportunity to gather our thoughts and to engage in some board discussion. So thank you to those members of the community who are waiting to share comments or feedback, and thank you for taking the time to be with us here this evening. With that, I think we are ready to turn ourselves to, now we're at 9.01, which is an opportunity to honor Aiden Melbourne, who I'm sorry is not with us tonight. But we did have a few kind words that we were prepared to share on behalf of Aiden's service to the Board of Education and the Katona Lewisboro community. So I'd like to ask somebody to please move, actually, Kim, I'm sorry, do we need to vote on the proclamations or should I move them or just share the positive words? Move them?
It should be voted on, yes.
Okay, thank you. Then can I ask somebody to please move the resolution for Aiden? Moved by Liz, thank you, and seconded by Scott. And then just briefly, I wanted to share some words on behalf of the board before Julia kindly reads the proclamation. So Aiden, when you have the opportunity to review this video of tonight's meeting, we want you to know that we're grateful for your service to Campus Congress, to the Board of Education, and the Katona Lewisboro community. Throughout the school year, you have provided insight and helped us to know what's happening across our district, and you have respectfully interjected and asked questions during presentations and discussions. Your contributions helped to reframe our conversations and helped us to reflect on how certain decisions were being communicated or experienced by our students. We appreciate your thoughtfulness and your engagement throughout the year. We thank you, and we hope that you'll stay in touch. We hope that you'll help us know what we did well and how we could have prepared you even better for the next chapter of your education. We wish you all the very best in college and your future endeavors. And with that, I'm going to ask Julia to plead, read a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you, Julia.
Whereas in the spring of 2019, Aiden Melbourne was elected by his peers at John Jay High School to serve as the student trustee of the Board of Education of the Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District. And whereas Aiden Melbourne was seated as the student trustee of the Board of Education of the Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District on July 2nd, 2019. And whereas Aiden Melbourne regularly attended and was always prepared for Board of Education meetings during the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas the Board of Education superintendent and assistant superintendents believe the school district has been enriched by the outstanding service that Aiden Melbourne has provided during his term of office to the Board of Education. And whereas Aiden Melbourne very effectively represented the students of the district at Board of Education meetings by presenting reports pertaining to John Jay High School, John Jay Middle School, Katona Elementary, Increase Miller Elementary, and Meadow Pond Elementary Schools, raising questions regarding the recommendations presented to the Board of Education from the administration. And whereas it is the opinion of the Board of Education that Aiden Melbourne has served the entire that Aiden Melbourne has served the entire Katona Lewisboro community with distinction through his vision, curiosity, citizenship, service, critical thinking, and collaboration. Whereas Aiden Melbourne will conclude his service to the Board of Education through attendance at the Board of Education meeting on June 18th, 2020, and will therefore be missed by the Board of Education superintendent and assistant superintendents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District hereby dedicates in celebration this proclamation on the 18th day of June in honor of Aiden Melbourne, and be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread across the minutes of the proceedings of this meeting for all to see. And if I can, just before we vote, just add that it really has been a pleasure to work with Aiden. I'm sorry, he's not here tonight. But I was so heartened by his honest reflections and his thoughtful questions and just a very earnest way of interacting with our Board of Education. And I think he represented his fellow students wonderfully and made us all feel really proud that his experiences, I'm sure both at home with his family, but also as a student in our district, really prepared him to be such a successful liaison for the students of Katona Lewisboro.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there any further discussion or comment before we vote? Okay. Thank you, Aiden. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific. Okay, thank you so much. And this brings us to item nine point oh two, which is our opportunity to say thank you and goodbye to Scott Posner, who's served with us on the Board of Education for the past six years. So if I can please ask somebody to move this proclamation. Moved by Bill, thank you, and seconded by Liz. Appreciate that. And Scott, in preparation for your last meeting as a member of the Board of Education, I've been reflecting on your contributions to Katona Lewisboro and our community over the past six years. In looking back, I was able to identify two guiding principles that inform your accomplishments and recommendations, your legacy to the board, so to speak. The budget should reflect the priorities and values of the organization, which is to say Katona Lewisboro's promise to its students and to our community, and we need to do more with less. I'm not sure whether these words, your own words, will sound familiar since they date all the way back to 2012 during public forum when you were on the other side of the podium. But I believe your sentiment then was a pillar and has now become a hallmark of your board service, one that resonates with all of us and that has served our students and our community so very well over the past six years. On behalf of the Katona Lewisboro School District and the entire community, we sincerely thank you for your dedicated advocacy, your commitment to balancing competing priorities, your moral compass, and your occasional sports analogies. Now we're going to be counting on Bill to carry on this aspect of your legacy. We know how proud you are to be part of a community where parents and students care deeply about education. And we thank you for representing our community and the needs of our students with thoughtfulness and integrity. We wish you all the very best. And with that, we've got a proclamation for you as well. And if you'll allow me, whereas the Board of Education of the Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District recognizes the importance of publication of public education. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes the importance of community members volunteering their time and efforts on behalf of the district by serving as school board trustees. And whereas Scott Posner has served the district with distinction as an exemplary trustee of its Board of Education for the entire six years that he has been a board trustee. And whereas Scott Posner has also served as the board's vice president, chair of the finance committee, chair of the audit committee. And whereas Scott Posner has demonstrated repeatedly and consistently and without fail throughout all of his years of service as a trustee of the Board of Education, his dedication and commitment to the education of the students of the district and to the overall welfare of the district. And whereas Scott Posner's colleagues on the Board of Education wish to acknowledge publicly Scott Posner's selfless devotion and commitment to the district and the many districts' successes and accomplishments that are attributable directly to the outstanding efforts by Scott Posner in his capacity as a trustee on the Board of Education. And now therefore, let it hereby be resolved that the Board of Education of the Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District hereby declares its appreciation and thanks to Scott Posner for all his work for and on behalf of the district. And be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread across the minutes of the proceedings of this meeting for all to see. Thank you, Scott. And I I believe Scott is probably waiting patiently to say a few words of his own, but not so fast. First, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Rifkin, please.
So I'll do opening arguments. You can do rebuttal. So I would like to take this opportunity to say a few words in tribute to Scott as he leaves the board. Logical or not, I feel a special bond with him as we were running mates, as it were, elected twice at the same time. Throughout all those candidates' nights, it always struck me that I made him look good by comparison. In elections with more than one spot available, this is an important role. Throughout our six years on the board, I cannot remember more than a very hand, very small handful of cases where we voted differently. And this is not simply due to board unanimity, but rather how regularly I was swayed by Scott's reasoning to modify my view. Scott is a rare combination of intellect and heart. If I was disagreeing with Scott, I made it my business to check my math. He was, he was passionate about the quality of the actual classroom experiences and that opportunities be preserved. For example, he is consistently advocated for foreign language at the secondary level and smaller class sizes at the elementary level. So I will miss you, the board will miss you, and in fact, the district will miss you. He has more than done his duty, so I regretfully wish him well as he rejoins civilian life. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Bill. Scott, we'll let you have the floor before we vote on this proclamation.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the very kind words from both of you. It will make, it will make my, my, my speech will pale in comparison to the words that were just said, but I will, I will drive on nonetheless, but, but thank you very much. For those watching and who don't know me, my wife and I have lived in district for over 16 years. We have a son graduating John Jay High School next week and a daughter finishing her freshman year at John Jay. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes saying a couple of very important thank yous and then take a little stroll down memory lane. When I brought home my school board nominating petition a little over six years ago, my wife was not happy. We both had agreed I would not run. I was too busy with work. We had young kids whose sports schedules seemed to be getting crazier. And for those that do not remember, there was a little bit of turmoil in our district in the spring of 2014. I had been resisting the increasing calls from community members to run for weeks. I ultimately changed my mind and eventually my wife reluctantly relented and was in fact the first person to sign my nominating petition. I went searching last week for the best quote I could find on true love. The best I could find was, "True love is choosing the many things a person did right rather than the one he did wrong. True love does not keep the record of wrongs." I like this quote a lot because I have been in a lot of trouble if my wife kept a record of all of my wrongs. However, I did not think this was sufficient, so I had to come up with my own. True love is supporting your husband when his actions have the greater good in mind and are not what is in the best interest of you and your family. She knew my work would just get busier and our sports schedules would go from crazy busy to insane. True love is when you and your husband are in your house together for only one night in a 13-day stretch in January 2019 because of two work trips, college visits, and travel sports. And on that one night, you're supposed to be in your house spending time together, your husband takes a car service from the airport from his work trip to his school board meeting. And then you have to be the one to pick him up at 11:00 PM to take him home from his school board meeting that is almost but not quite over so he can get back to his work emails. Thank you, Michelle, for always supporting me no matter what for the past 29 years. My next thank you is not nearly as personal, but is still very significant. I want to thank you, the KLSD community for trusting me and allowing, excuse me, and allowing me the honor and privilege of representing you for these past six years. There is no I in board trustee. And no individual board trustee has any power. I can't say we as a board got it right every time over the past six years. I know we didn't. I hope you agree with me, though, that the district is in unquestionably a better place than it was six years ago, and I thank you for allowing me to play a small role in this improvement. As I sit back tonight and think about how I got here personally and how we got here as a district, I keep thinking about a phrase I've been reading for years on Passover at my family's seder. I've been young and now I am old. I started out tonight telling you about my high school son and daughter. A little over eight years ago, when I stepped up to the public forum microphone for the first time, I started out my speech the same way, except then I was talking about my fourth grade son and first grade daughter at Meadow Pond. I highlight that night not to make myself feel old, although I do, but because I was not the only first grade parent that spoke in public forum that night. I was at the, I was at the end of a line of five other first grade parents that spoke that night. You may recognize the names of some of the others. Schiff, Paulbrook, Burke. We were there advocating for small class sizes. In addition to talking about the need for small class sizes for our youngest students, we also talked about the need for fiscal responsibility. One of my comments in public forum was, I'm glad it wasn't one of the ones that Marjorie commented on, but I am proud to be a part of a community where parents take an active interest in their children's education. I think Marjorie got part of that word for word. It never dawned on me that you would have four future board trustees from our little group of first grade parents. It may be a little hyperbole, but I absolutely believe there is also an element of truth when I say that we went from advocating for small class sizes to changing the course of our district. I said earlier that there's, that there is no I in board trustee, and we certainly did not do anything on our own. Our district has been fortunate to have many excellent trustees help guide us to where we are today. So where are we today? We are in an unquestionably better place than we were six years ago, and I will give you some facts and statistics to back that statement up. Despite what many people think, the Board of Education has very few responsibilities. The two most important ones are hiring a superintendent and approving annual budgets. Six years ago, we had interim leaders at many critical positions, including superintendent, and we had a community that quite frankly did not have a lot of confidence, neither to the school board or administration. When I was asked back then what I hoped would be the biggest accomplishment at the end of my term, I stated the hiring of a long-term superintendent. I talked about the need to bring stability to the leadership of our district. The hallmark of a successful organization, whether it's a school district, a sports team, or a public company, is stability at the top. Six years ago, we were in the middle of having had five superintendents in less than 10 years. We are now finishing up five years of Andrew at the helm. I said the board has not gotten every decision right these past six years. One decision we absolutely got right. Without question, our most important decision was the hiring of Andrew. We also have greatly improved our educational product. We have improved our class sizes with the strategic utilization of an increased number of contingency positions. We have added staff developer positions, introduced and then enhanced a therapeutic support program, built world language labs, and increased foreign language offerings, increased focus on innovation through the introduction of innovation grants, expanded our athletic opportunities, made numerous improvements to the district's infrastructure, along with many other improvements too numerous to, to, too numerous to detail. Importantly, we did all of this and reduced our tax levy by 0.18, 0.18% per year for the last six years. This is worth repeating. Our taxpayers in the aggregate will be paying less in school taxes in 2020, 2021 than they were in 2014. And I think the community has noticed. Our budget was approved with an average vote of 62% in favor in the six years prior to 2014. In the most recent six years, our budget has been approved with an average vote of 75%. And as Andrew and Marjorie noted earlier, 77% just this week. I am proud of all that we've accomplished as a board and as a district these past six years. And while I am very much looking forward to being an ordinary citizen again, if I'm being perfectly honest, leaving the board is a little bittersweet. I've enjoyed working with many great people in the administration and on the board. And while I could talk at length about so many of you, I have already rambled on for far too long, so I will only speak briefly about two of you. Bill, you have joined the board together, and I am thrilled that you will be around for another three years. You are a tireless advocate for our students and our taxpayers. You put the community before your own interests, as can be clearly seen by your changing your mind and running again this spring to provide the board with valuable continuity in the midst of the pandemic. And most importantly, you pushed me to try to be funnier as I attempted to keep up with your self-deprecating humor. If the Mets make the World Series again, I will be sure to come to the BOE meeting to give you score updates from the audience.
Thank you.
I also want to comment on the other trustee who I had the pleasure of serving with for all of my six years on the board. It was my extreme good fortune to have had Marjorie lead us as president my entire time on the board. We are very fortunate as a district, as a district to have Andrew as our superintendent. And I absolutely believe that we are equally as fortunate to have Marjorie serving as our president. In ways big and small, Marjorie's leadership has been critical to our success as a board. I will end where I began, recounting a story I mentioned a couple of times at public forum before I joined the board. At my company, we often talk about a three-legged stool. One leg represents our stockholders, one leg represents our customers, and one leg represents our team members. If we start to over-prioritize one leg over another, we will not be successful. When I look at our district, I also see a three-legged stool. One leg represents the district's taxpayers, one leg represents the students, and one leg represents our teachers and staff. I would love to make the student leg the highest priority and have incredibly small class sizes across the board, but that is not realistic nor feasible. Just like at my company, we need all three legs to be given equal priority. Remember, when you have a three-legged stool that is not in balance, your stool will crash, and then all three legs, teachers, students, and taxpayers will suffer. I have every confidence that our board and administration will be doing everything they can next year and the years to come to keep our three-legged stool aligned for the benefit of all of KLSD stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We still have a proclamation, not a resolution, hanging out on the floor that we'll vote on in a moment. You've given us a lot to think about, as is so often the case. So thank you for, for your kind words and for your careful reflection over your six years of service. We appreciate that. And if there is no further comment or discussion, then we can vote on this proclamation and send Scott on his merry way to life after the Board of Education. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Terrific. Thank you so very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this brings us to our opportunity for public forum. Again, we thank members of the community for being with us here tonight and for bearing with us while we indulge in some congratulations and well wishes to board members who are leaving. In just a moment, we're going to read the comments and questions that have been submitted. And please understand that this is our opportunity to really listen to you and to reflect on your thoughts. So we're not going to immediately respond or engage in any discussion or back and forth. Instead, we will then turn our attention to the consent agenda, which takes just a moment or two. We'll gather our thoughts and then come back for some board dialogue, at which time we can enter into some conversation and and speak to the reflections that you've shared with us. So first, I'm actually going to read a comment that was submitted a bit earlier through an email account that we were also using to collect thoughts and questions for our Board of Education meetings. Hello, I am Alexandra Ramsey. I was a student at Katona Lewisboro School District. I graduated in 2013, and I care deeply about educating the youth about relevant, important topics. Recently, through a gap analysis of the current curriculum in grades K through five, I noticed a few things. One, the curriculum has a wide range of rigorous content, which is excellent. However, there is a need for culturally responsive practices and pedagogical techniques to ensure all students, not just the majority, are benefiting from the curriculum. Or else KLSD could fall into a situation known as the tyranny of the majority, a situation in which the majority makes policies or takes, takes actions benefiting that majority without regard for the minority population. Therefore, I have a few proposed changes. One, give teachers directives to implement culturally mediated pedagogical practices. Create an equity audit task force that examines discipline, funding, access, and achievement. Two, incorporate more Black, Latino, Native American, and other persons of color voices into the curriculum and queer voices. I will be happy to provide more context with my proposed changes as I have limited amounts of time to speak today. I will also be happy to help be a part of making these changes, and I will be following up by June 30th on the consideration and or progress of these changes. So thank you. So thank you very much to Alexandra Ramsey. And I can see now that the questions are coming in, the comments, with some more regularity. And so with the board's permission, I'm going to ask that Julia help me out here so that we're having an opportunity to just read and familiarize ourselves with the words so that we can read as clearly and coherently as possible. So Julia, I'm going to ask you to read the next comment, please.
Sure. I just want to make sure our views are the same. I have a comment from Evan Noi that came in at 7:57. Evan Noi says, "As a 2018 graduate, the school has done a decent job educating about the misdeeds of the United States, but mostly in English class, especially Ms. Weiss's classes, compared to history and economics classes. I think we shouldn't shy away from educating about the misdeeds of the United States in the future."
Terrific. Thank you. And the next comment that I have is from Jane Crimmens at 8:25. Hi, I have to leave the meeting for a bit, but we'll put my comment here. My name is Jane Crimmens, and I have a rising fifth grader and a rising second grader at Increase Miller. I want to take this opportunity to commend the school district for the quality and rigor of instruction provided. From what I have noted, our students and graduates are data-driven, collaborative, able to form good arguments, kind, brave, and understanding. I have been in touch with various administrators, teachers, and parent volunteers over the years about my concerns with our perpetuation of a white-privileged culture. I have both the skills and the desire to collaborate in the effort to develop an anti-racist curriculum and mindset in the district. I now understand that a district-wide steering committee will be formed in conjunction with consultants from NYU. I humbly ask to be considered as a member of this committee. Thank you for your consideration and response.
This comment is from Mina Shah. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. My name is Mina Shah, class of 2012. The mission statement of the Katona Lewisboro School District's Board of Education states that its responsibility is to focus on creating an educational environment that will help our students become knowledgeable individuals, problem solvers, quality producers, effective communicators, wholesome individuals, collaborative workers, ethical individuals, lifelong learners, and responsible accepting and involved citizens. It would be very easy to look at the statements made at last Friday's professional development meeting for students in the letter sent to Superintendent Slesnik and shared in the meeting tonight and think that the system is working. Here are a group of thoughtful, community-engaged adults produced by our school system. However, I'd like to make it clear that those who've experienced these traumas, myself included, have become the successes we are today, not because of our experiences in Katona Lewisboro School District, but in spite of them. As such, and specifically in the context of the recent national energy around the movement for Black Lives, our community has a lot of work to do. While the personal reflection and learning alluded to by Superintendent Slesnik is all well and good, this moment and this movement also requires concrete action on each of your parts as individuals and as a powerful body in the district. With that, I'd like to address some action items for this specific body to engage in to begin doing that work. In every election cycle, you must actively seek out candidates of color for the Board of Education. The fact that there is only one person of color on this call and that he was the one who brought up the movement for Black Lives speaks volumes to the ways in which issues of racial equity and anti-racism pervades every level of governance in our town. In addition, I implore you to use your power to focus on hiring more teachers, administrators, and other staff members of color. Today, you are being presented with a plea for change. It would be not only unwise to ignore this plea, it would be irresponsible. The best way to end racism is not pretending it doesn't exist anymore. The best way to end racism isn't ignoring race entirely. The best way to end racism isn't performing token acts of racial placation. The best way to end racism we have now is anti-racist education. You choose the responsibility you have today as members of the Board of Education and as members of the community. I ask you to take that responsibility seriously. I understand it's my responsibility to ask for this. I hope you understand the urgency of your action. There have been Black bodies swaying around the country. There have been ceaseless violence from police departments against persons of color. There have been countless students who have contemplated unthinkable actions because of the actions of the adults around them. I hope you will all work against this to the best of your abilities. And then I think it's just shot.
I think that some of what you read might have actually been attributed to Sebastian S., and I believe there might even be more commentary down below. I'm just going to ask, while we're turning our attention to the next comment, if Sebastian S. could please follow through with his last name so that it's not unknown to us. That would be very helpful. I think Mina Shah's message ended with, "We must hold mandatory workshops on weaponizing whiteness, white fragility, and white supremacy for all white students. Reserve part of that class period for doing a piece of the reading so that its required nature is enforced. Make these a graduation requirement."
Yeah, you're correct. Sorry, Marjorie.
No problem. We must implement culturally responsive pedagogy throughout our district, not just because it will uplift the caliber of our education system, but because it is the right thing to do. We must allocate appropriate funding to do so. Our students must leave our school system equipped to understand themselves, the world around them, and how their actions, inactions, and language has very real consequences and can cause very real harm to the people around them. At 8:29, Catherine Foley submitted a comment, and Julia-
Oh, Marjorie. Marjorie, Mina has one more thing. It says, "Further, we must immediately cancel all programs that involve trips to spaces in formerly colonized spaces that encourage or involve white saviorism and/or the mining of community experience or data for the sake of learning." That's Mina's last section.
Thank you for pointing that out. And there's actually one more piece of Mina's at 8:30. "I hope student and alumni voices are heard and internalized tonight. We may have been negligent in shaping our community up to this point, but make no mistake, we are here now and we are going nowhere anytime soon. I personally look forward to making change with you." I think that concludes Mina Shah's comments. I'm going to just scroll up now, Julia, to Catherine Foley, beginning at 8:29 PM.
Okay.
Part one. My name is Catherine Foley. My white affluent family moved to South Salem in 1982. I attended Meadow Pond and am a 1996 graduate of John Jay High School. I later was a town reporter for the Lewisboro Ledger and a volunteer firefighter with the South Salem Fire Department. I am here today to offer my viewpoint on the deep and broad legacy of racism, prejudice, and bigotry in the Katona Lewisboro schools and community, and to encourage the board to wake up. It is both alarming and tragic that the letter the current students wrote to you this week could have been written absolutely verbatim by my class over 20 years ago. This district has willfully kept its eyes closed to these issues for decades. And as a result, you have thousands of John Jay alum out in the world who have never once been checked on their privilege and who continue to uphold and reinforce white supremacy, either knowingly or outright. Part two. I remember when I was 16 telling someone I was from a small town in Westchester County, and they said, "Oh, just one of the most affluent counties in the country." It was the first time I was even aware of this. It has taken decades of unlearning for me to truly understand and wake up to the implicit bias and harm I have perpetuated every day in my whiteness and how deeply I have benefited from systemic racism my entire life. How many more students do you want to graduate who will only go on to bring the world more suffering, more oppression, and more violence? It is your duty to stand up now with clear, decisive, and courageous leadership to dismantle the enduring intergenerational racism and inequity in your schools. Yes, hire the consultants and the experts, form the committees, and put all the bureaucratic wheels in motion that this will require. But each one of you personally needs to say out loud specifically where you are on this. Part three. That you stand with Black Lives Matter and the Movement for Black Lives, that you are committed to uprooting racism in the schools you oversee, and to uplifting and centering the voices and lived experiences of your Black minority and marginalized students in perpetuity. You need to provide the community with specific resources so they can begin to do the crucial personal and internal work of anti-racism. You need to provide immediate mental health support and resources for your current Black students. You need to provide faculty, students, and families a mandatory anti-racism summer reading list for every age group right away. You need to suggest ways your community can support the movement with their direct donations and get involved locally this summer. You need to say their names. You need to commit to hearing the voices of student and alum activists who are way smarter than you when it comes to this work. Part four. And you need to wholeheartedly and fully commit to long-term, ongoing anti-racism evaluation and implementation for every generation to come, ensuring that this work will be maintained and upheld past your tenures. Address this head-on, address this boldly, address this with the conviction of your heart and a deep, unquenching thirst for justice. Thank you. You're muted, Julia.
I'm going to read Sebastian S. It's going to take me a minute to go from, his name is Sebastian Singh, from the class of 2014. And I'm going to go back up. So Sebastian S., and I apologize for reading this previously under Mina's. "Today, you are being presented with a plea for change. It would not only be unwise to ignore this plea, it would be irresponsible. The best way to end racism is not pretending it doesn't exist anymore. The best way to end racism isn't ignoring race entirely. The best way to end racism isn't performing token acts of racial placation. The best way to end racism now is with anti-racist education. You choose the responsibility you have today as members of the Board of Education and as members of the community. I ask you to take the responsibility seriously. I understand it's my responsibility to ask you for this. I hope you understand the urgency of your action. There have been Black bodies swaying around the country. There have been ceaseless violence and police departments against persons of color. There have been countless students who have contemplated unthinkable actions because of the actions of the adults around them. I hope you all work against this to the best of your abilities." And I'm just going to scroll and see. I think I do not hope so because I want you to sleep well at night. I hope because I don't want more children to suffer, nor more people to suffer. Their suffering is real. Your actions must be real as well. I believe-
Thank you. I think that brings us to Jeremy Zittimer at 8:30. Part one of three. Hi, everyone. My name is Jeremy Zittimer, pronouns he/him. I graduated class of 2011. Hundreds of John Jay High School alumni participated in a highly emotional call with teachers and administrators last Friday where Black alumni, alumni of color, and alumni from marginalized communities shared scores of traumatic experiences, a KLSD, that permanently affected them. The mental and physical health effects of childhood traumas like the ones described on that call are severe and unambiguously accepted by social psychologists. And as we learned last week, they are felt widely by the students of our district, disproportionately so by Black students and students of color. This is not just a social issue for us. This is a health crisis. Many of us are just now entering into conversation with KLSD about how to tackle these issues. Understandably, it will take weeks or months for many of us to identify the best ways to heal our community and build an atmosphere of equity for our students going forward. But having witnessed extensive, relentless, even well-intentioned pushback to equity overhauls in corporate settings, the reason I'm writing here this evening and what I would like to know from the Board of Education is what systems the Board of Ed plans to create and leverage to hold teachers, administrators, and the BOE itself accountable to anti-racism in our schools? What dedicated recurring forums can community members use to maintain a consistent conversation on anti-racism with the leaders and educators of our district? What systems of administrator and teacher evaluation do we plan to leverage to ensure they deliver on any new KLSD initiatives? And how do we ensure that many of these initiatives are mandatory, not opt-in? What channels can community members use to raise concerns about school and staff and leaders who display racism, homophobia, and similar bigotry on campus or online? By what date can the community expect an in-depth, concrete BOE plan to tackle racism and inequity in our schools in the coming school year? Whose experiences and opinions do you plan to solicit as you decide what our goals of anti-racism in our schools will look like? Will the BOE commit tonight to diversifying the employees of our district and diversifying the BOE itself? I've been heartened by impassioned messages from district leaders from the last few days, and I thank you for your continued work. But I know that those messages of gratitude and good intentions are not enough on their own. I would like to hear your thoughts on the kind of questions I've raised above and where this accountability will come from.
I'm going to read something from Elena Schneider. "Thank you to all the members who have served and are stepping down. It is clear this board really listens to one another, learns and grows for the good of the district. The district has taken important steps towards beginning a discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am personally interested and believe others are as well in taking this to the next level with implementing anti-racist education and policies in the school at all levels, including elementary schools, as well as a community-wide dialogue around these issues. I would be happy to join any groups working on this."
From Fiona Weishardt. "Hello, my name is Fiona Weishardt. I graduated John Jay High School in 2016. I agree that our curriculum should not shy away from the misdeeds of the United States. I did not learn in my history classes about American eugenics and only learned an incomplete and sanitized version of slavery, the Asian Exclusion Act, concentration camps, and of the Civil Rights Movement. When students graduate high school, they graduate as adults. We must prepare them to act as such. They are voting, getting jobs, and making changes in the world." Pardon me. "It's the school's job to prepare students for the adult world, and right now, John Jay High School does not do so."
And then, just as a follow-up, Alexandra Ramsey, who had sent an email, said, "I humbly ask to be a part of any change task force that the BOE creates."
Thank you, Julia, for your help, and thank you to members of the community for your guidance and respectful commitment to this work and to the education that we provide in Katona Lewisboro. I'd like to just pause for a moment because certainly if somebody had intended to share a comment or a question, but we haven't acknowledged it, I'm going to watch the Q and A momentarily just to see if the number increases before we move on. And as I mentioned, please understand that we are reflecting on all that we've heard and we'll have an opportunity for board dialogue in just a few moments. In the interim, because I don't see any further activity in the Q and A, I'd like to suggest that we now move forward with the consent agenda. And that's our next item of business. We're at 11.01. I realize I already pulled item 12.06, which was our opportunity to accept the budget vote and election results. So thank you for that. I'm going to now move the consent agenda without item 12.06. If somebody would please second it for me. Seconded by Scott. Thank you. And I don't think we need to vote separately on any other items, but I did just want to pause for a moment to invite discussion on several of the items in the business matters portion of the consent agenda, because tonight is our annual opportunity to revisit our reserve funding. And I wanted to ask Danelle to please just share with us an overview of the transactions that we're going to approve or that we have the opportunity to approve in just a few moments, if you would please, Danelle.
Sure. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
So resolutions 14.04 through 14.11 represent changes to our reserves. We are utilizing four reserves to help offset the 2021 tax levy. The debt service will offset the tax levy by $10,000. The employee benefits accrued liability for $252,000. Retirement reserve of $463,000. And our unemployment reserve for $25,000. Those four reserves total $750,000. As you're aware, we are offsetting the tax levy by $3,200,000. So $750,000 of this will come from those reserves I just spoke about. And the remaining $2,450,000 is offsetting the levy by surplus that we have. The second part of these resolutions is setting the limits for our reserves. We typically set the reserve limits in the last meeting of June as we are obligated to set these reserve limits before we set our tax levy. We will be setting our tax levy later on at the end of the month in July. All of the reserve limits are set in a manner that ensures compliance with our appropriate regulations. During our external audit, these amounts will be reviewed by Bonn and Dio Group to make sure the limits are set in an accurate manner.
Thank you very much, Danelle, and thank you to the entire business department, business team, for all that went into preparing these resolutions and recommending these allocations tonight. This is a significant amount of work, and we really appreciate the opportunity to vote on these resolutions. Are there any questions for Danelle or for David? If not, then if I could just briefly also take this opportunity to- If not, then if I could just briefly also take this opportunity to thank you, David, for being with us this year. And perhaps this is going to be the last resolution that we vote on that has your fingerprints on it. And we really appreciate you being willing to serve in Katona Lewisboro with us for this year. It was the year of transition, and we came to rely quite heavily on you, and we wish you all the very best. And thank you for your service to the district. If there are no further comments or questions, then I think we can vote on the consent agenda. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, thank you very much. And this brings us to sixteen point oh one, which is a resolution for a gift, so just bear with me for one minute, please. Tonight, we have a couple of generous donations, so I will move this resolution. This is sixteen point oh one. Can I ask for a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Julia, okay, thank you. And we have a donation in the amount of twenty-two dollars, twenty-two dollars and thirty cents from Box Tops for Education for John Jay Middle School and a donation in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars from Daniel Millstein Photography. This is a video drone service for our June twenty-third, twenty twenty high school graduation at the Jefferson Valley Mall. Services are weather permitting for our class of twenty twenty. And if there's no further discussion, then we can vote on these resolutions. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you so much for these generous gifts. And this now brings us to seventeen point oh one, which is our opportunity for board dialogue. Not sure whether any board members had other topics that they brought for tonight's meeting? Or if not, this would be an opportunity to enter into some board conversation and with our administrators around the feedback that we heard and some of the requests that we heard. And I invite my board colleagues to open the floor to you. Yes, Roy.
Thanks, thank you, Marjorie. Wow, we opened up on a topic of sort of self-reflection, and while I took Andrew's words to heart, I was really touched by what Mina and Jeremy and Sebastian and Fiona and Jane and others said. And I was not privy to the call last week, but I do understand that a lot of people raised substantial concerns last week in a, in a meeting, I think it was on Friday. I just want to say, I, I'm really encouraged that the community is stepping up in this time of sort of national and maybe even global crisis. I, I feel like we are all on the same page. I, I completely agree with what everybody wrote in those comments. And I'm passionate and angry about what's transpired and what has been transpiring for so long in our world. And as I'm learning, in some cases in our school district, I find it completely unacceptable. And, and I'm happy to represent members of the community with their concerns in, in carrying out whatever needs to be carried out to make change. I don't know enough about what happened, but I, I will endeavor to learn more and, and to assist the board and the community to take whatever changes are necessary to, to work forward. I do think that there is an opportunity for, for us to be more representative on the board. But I would just like to say that that's entirely up to the public and to the community. It would be great if people of broader diversity ran for, for board membership. And I, and I hope that this might actually sort of encourage people next year and future years to come and represent the broad community. That, that to me is something that's very much up to the community rather than to the board. But I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiments that have been shared here. And I, from, from my point of view, I will do anything I can to support any initiatives, including anti-racism, education in our schools, and so forth. So I just wanted to put that out there that I'm fully supportive of the sentiment and stand ready to, to assist in any way.
I would like to also just make a comment. I, I, the, the, the gaps in kind of our understanding of our own country's history, I think, is, is something that really kind of struck me, and especially after Mr. Slaznick brought it up. Um, there, there are gaps and sometimes, you know, I, while I was thinking about this, I picked up the A P U S History Textbook. And, and there's definitely things that aren't covered in ways that really, I feel like help students genuinely understand maybe where we do have some gaps in our knowledge and gaps where we can't see. And, and, and some of these things are, go far beyond K L S D. But I think that getting this feedback from the students and former students that we heard tonight is very helpful in how we approach the things that we're going to need to do. And, and one suggestion in particular, which I feel like is something that we could do even just right now is, is develop a summer reading lesson where we can encourage some of our students who may not be able to have jobs or do their normal summer things. They have a little time on their hands, and maybe we could use that to, you know, great impact this summer.
So I have nothing too original or groundbreaking to say, other than I certainly agree with the ethos and the spirit behind all these comments. And I, I, I think that an approach is going to be a lot of fact-finding, investigation, finding information, learning, listening, I think a lot of listening, and a commitment to act as needed. But that the community should feel comfortable that the, you know, the board has heard you and takes these comments very seriously.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to reinforce what, what Bill is saying. And I think I'd like to just really share how proud I am of this board. And I think this board tries as best we can to really look carefully and closely at issues and don't shy away from them and have made decisions even this year to change things that we thought were not right within our school. I think that, I was talking to my sons the other day. When I was in college in nineteen ninety-five in upstate New York, I volunteered in a youth corrections facility. I'm certain it was because of my white privilege that I was allowed to volunteer in a facility of teenage boys, primarily of color from Brooklyn and the Bronx, who were in facilities upstate. And I really witnessed some of the impact of racial profiling and, and the acts of things that happen in this country that unfortunately have kids on a track that doesn't support their learning. And I was so inspired by that, that I did, I went on to do research on sociology and education and sort of that dynamic between how do we create an educational environment where people see themselves and our, and our education reflects their history? So, and that was twenty-five years ago, and we're still talking about it today. So there's so much work to be done, and it's unfortunate that it's, you know, taking so long for this work to happen. But I'm very, very inspired by the groundswell of people who are activated right now and interested. And, and I hope will continue to remain activated and interested so that boards of education like ours, who are trying to address some of these issues, have the community support that we need in order to make changes that will serve the community well. And I'm confident that our community is capable of doing that, and I hope that we're able to join with our community as we move forward to, to really look at ourselves and our district and continue the work that I think Andrew has so thoughtfully started through his leadership and through this board's leadership. And, and I thank all of you for speaking tonight and really know that, you know, I a hundred percent hear you and support everything that's happening in this country around moving forward a Black Lives Matter voice so that we can create a more equitable society. So thanks for speaking tonight and know that, you know, this is a very thoughtful and committed board that I think is with you a hundred percent. And we have wonderful leadership in, you know, all of our district leaders to try to help move forward whatever we can as quickly as possible as we work to address, you know, unfortunately, another, you know, plague of our country right now, which is a pandemic. And so balancing all of those is really important, and I, I trust that we can do that.
Thank you, Julia. I wanted to just revisit a question that was asked about accountability and concrete steps or actions that could be taken either in response to what we're hearing or in response to the groundswell of support for action rather than passivity. And a couple of things that come to mind, just when I think about, you know, what is really in the purview of the Board of Education? And this comes back to a couple of comments that were made earlier today in another context. But we have board policy that inspires and governs our work, starting with our mission policy zero, 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 which provides just an opportunity to go back to basics. And oftentimes, at the beginning of the school year, the Board of Education will go back to basics and rededicate itself to board goals or revisit board goals. And as was mentioned in a recent communication that went out to our students who submitted an open letter. You know, we have faithfully adhered to a leadership goal centered around inclusivity. And our educational philosophy and mission statement, board policy zero, 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 does talk about our belief that opportunities for success and expectations for achievement should be equitably available to all students regardless of gender, ethnicity, race, learning styles, or socioeconomic background. And then goes on to outline in further detail some of the beliefs. I mention that here, not because I think it's sufficient or perfect, but because that to me seems like a starting point for a conversation that could be had in our policy subcommittee, where maybe there's an opportunity to revisit the language that has served us for the past ten years. And maybe twenty twenty, twenty-one is an appropriate time to revisit the language of the educational philosophy and mission statement of Katona Lewisboro. In addition, just going to standards and accountability, I think it's important to mention that in evaluating the work of our superintendent, who then evaluates the work of other building leaders, one of the seven standards of evaluation is ethical leadership. And I think there are some very useful indicators that can be used to, that are used to evaluate how we're doing and what we're doing through the lens of ethical leadership. So I, I did want to provide the reassurance that this is not a new concept to the Board of Education nor, I presume, a new concept to our superintendent or our other building leaders or faculty. And that routinely people are evaluated on their, their ethical practice and, and leadership. And we have high expectations around ethical leadership of all staff members. So I, I did just want to mention that there are a couple of concrete policies and exhibits that do speak directly to some of the challenges and suggestions that are being made this evening. And, you know, where certainly we can revisit our policies, our, our tools to ensure that they're as strongly worded and as reflective of the important work that we have undertaken and hope to strengthen and improve. Those were just a couple of things that occurred to me. You know, thinking about what we have at our disposal as a Board of Education to look at, to think about, and how to inspire action. Other thoughts or comments? Terrence, yes?
So I mean, I'm, I'm blown away. And everyone knows I have a big mouth and I'm kind of speechless. So I, I just want to, you know, I'll, I'll start by saying thank you to all the folks who are engaged with us tonight, who have been, you know, who have just taken it upon themselves to be a part of this and to make sure that we hear them, right? And, and we certainly do. So I, I, so I start with the thank you. And I'm really just, again, I'm blown away with how passionate and how just really sophisticated and, and so well thought through and thorough and really, I'm gobsmacked by, by that. I shouldn't be, but I am. That's not always the level of dialogue these days, as we know. So, you know, I, I appreciate the, the calls for action related to curriculum. So I'm a university administrator and I'm a professor, and so curriculum pedagogy means a lot to me. And so I wholeheartedly agree that this is an area within, you know, whatever purview we have within the district. You know, we're a public school district, there's certain things we have to do. But where, you know, we can expand, where we can be more ambitious, I'm very committed to working with our board and the administration to try to find ways to do that. You know, the diversity of our town and the student body, it's changing, you know? And I think it is incumbent upon us, unfortunately, it comes on the heels of yet another and another and another horrifying, senseless, brutal, tragic murder to kind of shove and push and drag us here. But we're here, you know? When I was running for the board a couple of years ago, and, you know, I, I don't have a leg to stand on in terms of the work done for the district. But, you know, one of the things that was, that wasn't as important to me is diversity. And I was talking to a friend and he said, and he lives in town, and he said, but how does a, a community that is not diverse teach itself to become diverse? And I thought, wow, you know, and he didn't say it in a, in a kind of negative or aggressive way. It was really a, a very kind of, I thought, deep philosophical question, right? You know, we're in this echo chamber, so to speak, we're in a very comfortable zone. But I would say that this is how it happens. And again, it's, it's, it's really sad that events had to happen that bring us here, but this is how it happened. And this type of engagement is how we will do that work, you know? I'll echo a little bit of what Marjorie said. And just to, to state, and, you know, I've had the real pleasure and privilege of working with this group of administrators in this board for the past couple of years. And I can say unequivocally, you know, we do care. You know, we absolutely care as professionals, as human beings, we care. And we do, as a district, have, we have policies and procedures in place. We are doing certain kinds of work that are invisible into the public eye. So I, I just don't want there to be this sense of like, you know, we don't do anything. We don't care about that at all. We absolutely do care, and there is good work being done, you know? And I'm going to say that changing the mascot is, is an example of that. The board did not have to go after that. The administration did not have to go after that, but it was important to the board. It was important to the administration. And we went after that issue, and I think the administration handled it as, as, in a sophisticated and a skillful manner as possible with incredible compassion and understanding for every side that came forward. So not to say we're going to hang our hats on that, but that was driven by the same ethos and passion that I think pushes this dialogue now. And, you know, it's not enough. There is more that can and should be done, absolutely. We all know that, everyone knows that. And I would say that there are going to be ups and downs, there are going to be chances to do things. There's going to be pushback when we start to do the things that we're talking about now. It may not start tomorrow, it may not start in a month or two months. When we start to do them, there will be pushback and there will be ups and downs. Black people have been enslaved in America for more years, and they have been free in America. And so the pessimist, the pessimist in me with biracial children says, I don't know in my lifetime if I will see the quote-unquote "end of racism." I don't know if our work will ever be complete in my lifetime. But I think, you know, we have a group here in our administration and our board that I firmly believe is committed to that kind of work. You know, it's so easy in a town like this to think it's not our problem because we don't have a lot of people of color living in this town. it's not our problem because we don't have a lot of people of color living in this town, you know? But it is what it is. And this is the kind of pressure and this engagement. You know, I won't say I like it, right? Because people are upset, we're upset. Everyone's upset about what's happening right now, that's why we're here. But it's good pressure. It's the pressure that we want and we need to accelerate this kind of work. So like my fellow board members, I'm, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves, do the things that we need to do in any way, shape or form to help the administration and to help our community to advance because it's necessary for us now, it's going to be necessary for our kids and our kids' kids and so forth. So I just appreciate folks being here.
Thank you, Terrence. Thank you, everyone. Andrew, were you waiting to say a few words?
Yeah, thanks, Marjorie. Again, I don't, I don't know that I can add, but I do think it's important to acknowledge that we're listening and, and to let the people know who made comments tonight that they've been heard and, and heard loudly and clearly. And the fact that we may not be announcing plans tonight in response to some of the comments in no way, shape or form means that we're not listening. In fact, I think it's all, all the more important, given the lack of diversity on the screen tonight, that we take time to engage with other people to think through how we move forward together. And I appreciate the offers that have come in and we'll be taking people up on those offers and we'll be working together. That's, that was, I know I didn't say it all that artfully, but that's the point I was trying to make at the beginning this evening with my, in my approach to thinking about a letter for the community. And, and that letter was to accompany a reading list. And then an article was shared with me about some of the problems with turning, with white people turning to reading when things are difficult in the world around us, that reading itself is not sufficient and we need to think about what more action we can take than that. So I think it's important that, that we be open to listening, very open to listening and thinking through the most thoughtful and sensible approaches and, and doing it in ways that are inclusive of all the, the different voices that we have around us. So I, like everybody else, I thank the very thoughtful participation of these community members. We've been, we always, again, say we want to be a partnership with our community. When we did the Learning Cafe on Diversity a couple of years ago, it was one of our better-attended learning cafes, which was very gratifying. So it was clear even then, and this was long before the current crisis, that there were, was interest in the community. And it's clear that that continues and we will be tapping that interest. So thank you to those folks and I'm sure others will come along too. And the work will move forward, we're committed to that. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Andrew. And thank you again to members of the community for sharing your perspective and for your thoughtful feedback and remarks this evening and for your patience. If there aren't any further comments or remarks from board members or members of the administration, then I think we're ready to look ahead.
Marjorie, I do, I do actually want to make a totally different comment, but I just didn't know when was the right time.
Please.
This is shifting gears completely. And it's going back to the thank yous that we were making earlier and the thank you that you made to Dave. I don't, I don't want tonight to end without me having a chance to say thank you, Dave, to you. This is to Dave Quatroshi, our interim assistant for Business, who I spoke to, maybe it was a little bit more than a year ago today when I spoke to Dave about the possibility of coming to the district. And of course, at that time, neither of us had any idea at all of the year that lay ahead. And in fact, I would imagine that Dave probably thought to himself, oh, well, that's a very well-managed, financially well-managed district. And maybe it'll be relatively straightforward to come there for a year and continue managing the finances. Little could we know about what was to come. And so we're incredibly grateful to have had Dave and his experience through what turned out to be the most turbulent year that any of us have probably experienced in education. And it's been Dave's calm presence and guidance and knowledge of the world of finance that has helped us through and helped us prepare the budget that was so overwhelmingly supported by the community yesterday. So Dave, I can't thank you enough. And thank you for also, I know, continuing to support Danelle in her work and helping her to continue preparing for the role that she will now assume. So thank you for helping us with that transition also. And really thank you for being with us, I can't say enough.
Thank you, Andrew, I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. And thank you, Andrew, for those kind words. So this brings us to 18.01, which is our opportunity to look ahead to future meetings. And at the moment, we have just one scheduled meeting for July 9, which will be the opportunity for the board to participate in its annual reorganization meeting. And this is when we will welcome our new board member. And Bill will have the opportunity to be sworn in, so to speak, to serve another term. And that brings us to 19.01, which is our opportunity to adjourn. I'm going to suggest that we adjourn back into executive session to discuss the employment history of an individual. If somebody could please second that for me. Seconded by Rory, thank you. And just a quick logistic note that we have a Zoom logistic piece of information in our email that we can use to access that meeting. It's the same Zoom link that we've used in the recent past. So thank you so very much, again, to members of the community for joining us tonight, for speaking with us. And thank you so very much to our entire Katona Lewisboro community for the terrific support of our budget and proposition, too. We sincerely appreciate that. We look forward to doing even better in the next school year. And thank you so very much. So may I ask us to please vote on the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific, have a great night, everybody. Thank you very much and see you in July. Take care.